Thank you, Brian. It is nine thirty-one and I will call the February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Medina County Commissioners to order. Let's start with the pledge. And we don't have a flag here because we're all on Zoom, but let's just do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we are holding this meeting virtually today because of the weather conditions and pursuant to, I think it's Steve Housebill one ninety-seven. Or one ninety-six anyhow, we are authorized by state law to hold meetings virtually. Our prayer for the morning and I would like to have a moment of silence after our prayer for Curtis Perkins' son and Curtis, the Perkins family. Young Mr. Perkins was killed last week in a car accident, very tragically, and Curtis has been a senior, has been a tremendous contributor to our solid waste district here in Medina County. So our prayer this morning. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fill our truck. Amen. And just a moment of silence. Curtis Perkins Jr. We wish the Perkins family well in this difficult situation and and our thoughts and prayers are with. Steve, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from our February ninth meeting?
Yeah, move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes. And we will move into our resolutions. This morning, we have Andy Conrad, our county engineer, and somewhere there's Dan. We have Dan standing in.
Yeah, Andy didn't want to come this week. I get to come instead.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning. First resolution, I have five total. The first resolution today is for a resolution accepting and awarding the two thousand and twenty-one multi-road improvement project OPWC number CI twenty-three X. The second resolution is accepting and awarding the two thousand and twenty-one replacement of bridge number thirty-three on River Corners Road. The third resolution is accepting and awarding the bid for the two thousand and twenty-one hot mixed batuminous plant mixes. The fourth bid is a resolution accepting the bids for the two thousand and twenty-one Medina County aggregate bid. And the fifth resolution is approving the annual county highway system mileage certification report prepared by ODA. But we also have the weekly permits.
Moved to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Amy Lyon Alvin, our Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning.
Morning, Amy.
I have nine resolutions this morning. The first resolution is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second resolution is a revenue adjustment for the sale of surplus county property. These are for the auction proceeds for items sold March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty through December fourteen of two thousand and twenty. The third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The fourth resolution is authorizing the purchase of seven thousand three hundred gallons of regular unleaded gasoline for the engineering center. This bid went to Cuyahoga Landmark at the lowest bid price of one point six zero eight nine per gallon for regular unleaded gasoline. The fifth resolution is accepting an application for the use of a procurement card for the Medina County engineer. And if I may, just let you all know that we've got the procurement cards ready for pickup for all the departments that have the cards here in finance beginning this week. Linda has those packets ready to go, so they'll be using them actively in their departments as well. The sixth resolution is pardon? Oh, the sixth resolution is approving an agreement for inmate legal research assistance at the Medina County jail. This is an agreement with Candace L. Brown at a rate of fifty dollars per hour not to exceed nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the period of March first of two thousand and twenty-one through February twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty-two. The seventh resolution is authorizing a professional service agreement within Volta. And this rest or agreement had been reviewed by the prosecutor's office and they recommended it be accepted with some minor changes. That agreement just came through right here at about nine fifteen AM where they had reduced the scope per our discussion from last week to remove the cybersecurity assessment component of it. So the not to exceed price is now listed as forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. And they're only going to bill us for the hours performed and the services performed. The eighth resolution is allowing expenses of the adult probation department. This is for the National Association of Drug Court Professionals Conference in National Harbor, Maryland. There's two judges and six employees going in August and this these monies will come out of their TCAP fund, so it's for twenty-five thousand dollars. And the last resolution, the ninth and final for me today are claims for the week in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and four dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Moved to approve the nine resolutions and of course, the Involta contract as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I just make a couple of points. The the legal research resolution, the county is legally required to provide legal research services to jail inmates. And that is something that that we are just fulfilling our requirements for doing so. Amy, do you have any idea how many procurement cards we are issuing in total roughly?
Yeah, we're at about nineteen at this point. I think eighteen you've already approved and then we had a couple of more pending applications that are going to be coming in. So we'll be somewhere below in the about the twenty department range for activity.
I think that's great because it's it will bring a lot more efficiency to our government by doing that. I think it is an appropriate thing that we're doing.
And to be able to shop for some good prices online too.
Right.
Easier with a credit card.
Yep, yep. And there are a lot of services that you have to have a credit card in order to take advantage of. The the last comment that I would make is on the Involta contract. Scott and I attended the data board meeting last Thursday and this was discussed regarding the cybersecurity and there are provisions that the that Lowell, Philak has already in place for conducting some of the security scans and what have you. So we're going to take advantage of those contracts instead of doing it separately. Is that accurate, Scott?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any any other discussion? Round of roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes. Thank you. Next up, we have Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Holly.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have two promotions in sanitary, nine rate increases, two in building, four in sanitary, three in job and family services. We have one leave of absence and maintenance, one return from leave and sanitary, and one resignation rescinded in maintenance.
Moved to approve the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Sweattick. Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to Scott Miller, our County Administrator.
Good morning. Good morning, Scott. I just have one resolution for you today. It is approving an increase in the threshold amount for annual inventory. It's taking it from a hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. So departments will now have to tag everything that's over a hundred dollars. Be everything over five hundred at this at this point.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes. Moving on, we have one commissioner resolution and we are recognizing Marion Coffey, who is at the Board of Elections for her twenty-one years of service. Marion has been employed with the Medina County since March first, two thousand. And she's been employed at the Board of Elections for twenty-one years as a clerk and deputy director. The Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Marion for her commitment and diligent work in Medina County and for her ongoing dedication to assisting and providing exceptional customer service to Medina County residents, voters, and community partners. It is resolved by the Board of County Commissioners that Marion E. Coffey be and is hereby commended for all her years of service with Medina County and her retirement from the Medina County Board of Elections. Could I have a motion to approve?
Approve the resolution.
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I just want to say Marion's been there a long time and those of us that run for office more than one occasion have had to work with with her and the staff and realize that when she first started, we were doing punch cards for ballots and at least the in her first election, major election was involving those, you know, issues of hanging chads and all that other kind of stuff. So there's been, and if I remember correctly too, they have occasional issues with the machinery and trying to get it replaced. And obviously, we've come a whole long, very long way, and she's been around during all that transition.
Congratulations, Marion.
Yes, I have been the liaison to the Board of Elections for the last four years since I got elected the first time. And she is very, very knowledgeable about what goes on at the Board of Elections and and Steve, to your point, the the two thousand election was the year that Supreme Court decided the election and it was all about hanging dads. So yeah, you're absolutely correct. So I will present this resolution to Marion this afternoon, assuming that we have the Board of Elections meeting this afternoon, but I will present it to her at that time. So roll call, please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes. And now we will move on to our department updates. Richard, there you are.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. I believe you have your reports already. Looking at our monthly report for January, you can see on that first page that our constructions up a little bit already in January compared to last year. The release, the value of the constructions up lower part of the page is new home starts in January is running about average at twenty-two started. Second page. The receipts, you know, for January also up a little bit over January of last year. By and large, a good sign. The remaining pages is a lot of small detail for anybody who wants to investigate what's going on in each individual township. Also going on in our department tier. The applications have slowed down some this time of year. And that's kind of nice for us. It's allowed us to get pretty caught up with our changeover. And our residential turnaround is at three days. Commercial turnaround is at about fifteen days. So that's a you know, real good thing. Hopefully, we'll just keep it there from here on out. We are going to purchase another month of the Lama system so that we have access to that. We have a lot of jobs still to be finished up and we're not going to be able to finish them up in March. So we're going to go ahead and get April also. That'll help us get those wrapped up. And another another item. We recently submitted our yearly report to the Ohio Board of Building Standards. This was the twenty nineteen report that was never done. We didn't think they would notice, but they surely did. And they asked us to go ahead and send that in, even though it was a year late and not entirely perfectly accurate. So we did our best and sent that report. And we will soon be sending the twenty twenty report that is going to be due shortly. And that will be more accurate and but at least also turned in on time. The network, we're doing good. That's all I have.
Thank you, Richard. Are you aware of any changes to the, any significant changes to the building code, either residential or commercial?
There's nothing significant. In fact, the code change won't even happen in residential. I don't believe that'll happen for another year or two. Commercial might be coming sooner. But I am not aware of of any major changes that that are in the works. We do get made aware of them. You know, ahead of the fact. In fact, we're able to comment on them also. And I haven't seen anything yet.
Okay, thank you. I do think it's remarkable that our average home price, I know this is only based on one month, but is four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. I mean, I over over the last four or five years, I think that has gone from the the high twos and blew through the threes and is now well over four hundred thousand dollars. That's
Yeah, I'm not sure if that'll keep up. I think we could still be that that number could still come down. I think it might be affected by some pretty large homes recently having been built. But it may remain. I don't know. We'll see.
Construction for the for the month was up by what, four and a half million dollars or so over year over year? I mean, that in and of itself is incredible.
How is it going? How is the process going of going back to your old computer system?
It's going okay. It was a little bit rough for the first several weeks, but it's it's gotten better now. We keep tweaking it a little bit. As I said last month, it was a little different, even though it's the same program we used. We're entirely electronic now, whereas before we had paper files. And it's amazing how much that affects everything. And but it's working out okay and continues to get better. On okay.
Very good. Any other questions for Richard? Well, thank you, Richard. We appreciate the update and I look forward to you coming back.
Ready. Thank you.
Let's move on into discussion session. Scott, I think you have a couple of things for us, don't you?
I do. So I'm going to share my screen here. Yeah. Going and do this. I've not done this before, so I'm not sure what to expect.
We're not either.
Uh, let's see.
Dope. Good start.
All right. So last week, can you see that?
Okay.
Yeah, you might want to, uh, there you go.
All right. So last week, last Thursday, that is Historic Preservation Board met and Nancy and Azek attended it. And they reviewed several concepts that were presented by Branson and Carroll. And the reception was actually very, very, they were all very well received. The the three concepts, they said, you know, were, they didn't. They complemented the the current buildings. They didn't compete with them. They were very thankful and very happy that Branson and Carroll did that or designed them in such a way. So this is the first, this is one of the concepts. The other, this was another concept that they presented. And then I think the favorite concept of the Historic Preservation Board was actually this one. I think three like this and one liked each of the others. So obviously, we have a budget, so we're going to do what we can to to obviously meet the requirements while keeping our budget down. The one thing they did want is they, we've got, this is the the south side. This would be the entrance to the courthouse. And then they've got this, which is the north side. So you can see the north and the east side of the buildings. They want to see what the west side looks like. The west side will be really facing the courtyard. And it'll look a lot like the east side. It won't have this this here. Most likely. But they also wanted to kind of, I don't have don't have a rendition of it, but from the from the square itself. If you're on the other side of the square and the leaves are off the trees, we'll most likely be able to see the top of the of the new courthouse here, but you won't be able to see it really if you're close to the courthouse or even probably in the middle of the square because of the distance from the old building. And during the summertime, you won't be able to see it all because of the leaves on the square. So this is what's being presented. They are going to put together a design or show or rendition of what the west side will look like. I still, they're still looking, they're still trying to make some some minor adjustments. The only other request that they had was really the landscaping. And I'm not sure they wanted to be historical, historic landscaping, basically to reflect landscaping of the late eighteen, I guess, late eighteen hundreds. So that was the one request. It'll go back to the Historic Preservation Board in March along with the planning committee. And hopefully, we'll have a final decision made at that time and we can move forward. So we do have I have been meeting with bond counsel and with our underwriter. We're in the process of completing the official statement. That'll get turned in probably this week. Probably either today or tomorrow, actually. And then, so we're moving forward with the bonds. I'm looking at issuing probably thirty-two million dollars in bonds. And then we also met with Shejra Buckley in Mayfield last Wednesday to start with the technology discussions. So we talked a lot about the server room, location of the technology rooms or the phone rooms, tele-communication rooms and what's going to be needed. We'll probably set up a meeting for next week to continue our discussions on access controls and security. So we are moving forward. Again, the intent is to have something started in May. We'll probably start the staging area, getting the staging area set up. And we are going to have to put a ramp on the front of the building of the sixty-nine courthouse for ADA access. Once the construction starts and once we get the staging area set up, we will be moving all of the security equipment to that front door. And that will then be the main entrance to the courthouse until security, until the courthouse is so again, we are moving forward. The other thing that happened several weeks ago, one of the toilets on the second floor of the courthouse broke, I guess a coupling broke, and we had water that ran flooded. The juvenile probate area flooded into the hallway, ran down into law library and flooded the walls in the law library. So we, last week, we started tearing the walls apart. We found that there was some mold there. So we're going to have that mold tested to see if it's truly black mold. We are gutting the law library and we will have to renovate and rebuild the rooms down there. With the mold that's there, I will be doing probably a test. I'll test the air quality on the first and second floors just to make sure that there's there's no mold in the air up there. And then depending on what we find, we'll we'll do what we need to do if we find mold. So that's all I have.
Scott. Now, as I understand, isn't revised concept three is the one that they're seem to be preferring?
This one?
Yeah.
What about it? And Steve, you're really hard to hear. Your microphone is
Okay, yeah, sure. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's better.
Better.
Okay, good. Yeah, the revised concept three, is that the one that they seem to be preferring at this point?
Yes, three of the five board members preferred this one.
Okay, well, we ask you now, what it means is that top row or excuse me, that top floor is not going to have windows on that wall. Who's who's offices, does that affect?
Actually, that's a courtroom. So there's a courtroom, there's a courtroom on the west side. And they don't need windows. As a matter of fact, the courtrooms are, most of the courtrooms are interior and don't have windows. And then on the other side, I think it's an office, but I think there might be windows on the east side. So there is a window going to that, but that was something that they they looked at and they they feel that what's needed is there.
Yeah, actually, Steve, Steve, in the in that corner in the southwest corner of the building, there is a courtroom and it would, it may, it may have windows in the west side of it.
Got it.
But I think that I think the preferences generally in courtrooms is not to have windows. And then and then the area that would be on the south central part of that building, just to the right there where Scott's cursor is right now, is actually a stairwell.
Okay, all right.
There isn't anything that it would be really be blocking.
Okay.
I I think the choice at the Historical Society, the majority approved, I think it's lovely.
Yeah.
Yep. I I do too. I've got one question. What is, what is eighteen sixties landscaping like?
Yes, I would be very
How is it any different than what it is today?
I don't know. Nancy questioned that also, and she was going to check with their landscape architect to determine what that might look like. So hopefully, when we have, when we meet next time, we'll have some sample of what that is. But no, that was something that Nancy had also asked. So we'll, we'll see, I guess.
Yeah, I don't have really any objection to it. I just don't know what it, how it would differ from anything that we would do in a you know, a two thousand twenty-one landscape. So
Yeah, I don't know if it would be, you know, some type of a, you know, you know, types of trees, types of bushes that maybe were popular back in the eighteen hundreds versus, you know, currently. I don't know, but I know that the landscape architect's going to take a look at it and and let us know.
Okay. All right. I, we're still working on the the fourth floor, Judge Dunn space. And I my my suggestion, Scott, I went back and looked at some of those emails today is is maybe if we're going to do a sort of a redesign, maybe it would be helpful if if Nancy worked directly with like Jen Moore or somebody at the court to sort of revisit that whole area. I think Jen is connected in enough that she knows what their needs are. And maybe she could spend a little time on it and get something that then they could present to Judge Dunn and I hopefully get him to approve. I, uh, hopefully get him to approve.
Okay. Yeah, I can give Nancy a call and let her know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would, I would rather have them work collaboratively than, than have them do five different designs that, uh, that all get um, turned down.
Yeah, I agree.
So, okay. Um, Scott, any, any other things on the courthouse, old or new?
Um, I don't believe so.
Very good. Um, Amy, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Holly? Rhonda? Brian? Colleen?
I just wanted to thank, um, Ed from the Veterans Commission for in, inviting me to, uh, go to a conference on some of their issues that I will be virtually attending. Um, I think it's the second week of March, so I'm looking forward to that.
Uh, a- actually, Colleen, do you have anything else?
I do not.
I wanted to bring that up, um, because Ed, um, Ed has been invited to participate in the National Association of Commissioners. And, and Steve, I don't know if you could lend any historical perspective on it. Is there, has there ever been any conversation about Medina County being a member or not being a member of that organization?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Honestly, I don't know. Yeah, I, uh, uh, no, no, I've no idea. I'd have to, I guess, do some research. I know that, uh, you know, Ed's been great working down at the State Association, uh, for the last number of years. So as a legislator, uh, in fact, we added some amendments, uh, based upon his input, uh, uh, over the last, uh, several GAs, uh, on some stuff and, and, and frankly, uh, yeah, he's been a great officer for the Veteran Services Board. So I would be, I would not be surprised that, to, uh, find out that he's about the, uh, only one who has risen to that level of prominence.
Um, you know, a couple of years ago, um, they wanted to appoint him to this, this, uh, National Association position. And, and there was a, a concern that, that Medina County was not a member of the National Association, uh, but they still moved forward to appoint him. So he, uh, he obviously is well-recognized, um, and does a great job. So I, I just wonder, uh, there are five spots that, um, apparently uh, Ed has, uh, available. Um, Steve, do you have any interest in attending it virtually?
Uh, I'm looking at my schedule, see if I, if I, I can, uh, I'll get back to Ed. I didn't want to block somebody out, uh, to, you know, attend those.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody else, but I, I, I thought that, uh, if there's a spot, I might do it as well. Just to get.
I think there, I think there, I think he had a couple that he offered us at least.
Well, I think in his email, it said he had five.
Yeah, I, I, I talked to Ed briefly, Bill, and, um, he said he wanted to know if the three commissioners would be interested in attending. And, uh, I, I told him I, I didn't know. So those five spots I think are available to anybody, um, in the Commissioner's Office that wants to. And so if the three of you would like to attend, I, I believe that those three spots are available.
Okay.
Brian already registered me, Bill, so I'm sure he could register you too.
Um, yeah, Brian, why don't you go ahead and register me as well, if you would? Um, Colleen, anything else?
No.
Very good, Steve?
Uh, nothing to add to, uh, I don't already know that, you know, the, uh, input on the, uh, 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 well, the broadband bill, uh, Senate Bill eight, it went through the, the Senate that very day and, uh, we were, I, I will say, uh, the vote was already taken before. I think our, some of our stuff, well, we did have some problems apparently with maybe the server. So, some of the house members didn't receive it till the, the next day. Um, so I, I'm not sure what went on, uh, but, uh, they're still having hearings on the House Bill two, uh, down there in finance. It is scheduled, it looks like to be on the agenda, the House floor, uh, probably Thursday. So, um, I don't think there's much mood to make some of the changes. Certainly not going to change the eligibility. Our hope is that at the very minimum, they change the timeframe for notification of people that their, uh, property tax bills are going to be, they're, they're going to be assessed. Uh, and I think general recognition for both Daryl Kick and Sharon Ray has, uh, two weeks is not sufficient notice to someone, uh, given what we've seen with the, in, in first-class mail, that's totally insufficient.
Do you really think this is going to pass in the House?
Absolutely. Oh, it is. It is. There's no doubt the whole thing's going to be passed. Uh, now, remember, this is just the twenty million, but it's setting up the structure with the Department Administrative Services for the administration of these grants. The big funding's going to be coming through the budget. And there might be some opportunities to get some amendments i- i- in there as the budget process works through. Whenever they decide how that a hundred and, uh, twenty-five million each year gets, for the next two years gets spent. So it might be some opportunities, but at this point, that framework is going to be, uh, uh, it's pretty much a, a bill that's been baked. Uh, it's the version eight of the bill from last General Assembly. So they've, they've kind of worked out a lot of the differences. And over the last couple of months, uh, the, the, I'll just say everybody's already uh, convinced this is the way they're going to go. Everybody's screaming from broadband. Unfortunately, they're, I, uh, not paying as much maybe to the details of it and everybody agrees and we'll have to see if we can get some of the, some of the changes, uh, the, and then the concerns that we brought up about it. Uh, and I think if I've also received from David Carrato, they're seeing if there's a workaround, uh, for at least the, the, the one contract, contractor, a private sector, in- individually working with, uh, could be able to be eligible for some of those funds. But we're still working through that. Um, and then the CCAO, I, I, I obviously had, uh, they also had released their legislative platform, uh, and their priorities and, and obviously we're all very appreciative of the governor, uh, putting, uh, indigent defense, uh, even to a higher level. I think ninety-four percent.
Into ninety-six, yeah.
Yeah, so this, it's, it's great. But what you remember is still, uh, we're still going to be pushing with the legislature, uh, to make sure that that stays that way, if not more. And then, of course, the other budget priorities to make sure that we don't see a reduction in local government fund. Um, or any of those other, uh, other, other aspects where we get impacted. It's nice to see the money rise, but if they take away money from some other pot, uh, that's not so helpful. So, but I, I think we've got a, uh, governance committee meeting on Thursday, CCAO, as well as a board meeting on Friday. Where we'll be talking about, uh, the networking and, and pushing forward with our budget priorities.
Thank you, Steve. I, I, I am really disappointed that they passed or are going to pass that, um, with the, the provisions in there that rural areas and rural property owners could be taxed and assessed to, uh, basically extend fiber to, to and through those areas, um, and, and, and really it only benefits the private companies that are going to a- acquire the business. Um, does not make a lot of sense to me that you'd have these property owners subsidizing these major companies coming in to do this. I think we need broadband, but I think it's a bad policy decision to do it the way.
It's extremely bad policy.
I, 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 I agree, but I, I, you know, after talking to some of the legislators out there, a lot of them have constituents that are desperate for broadband. And even though they're, even, even farmers saying, oh, I'd be willing to pay, you know, uh, fifty, a hundred bucks more a month just to be able to get broadband. Okay, I guess, uh, when you're that desperate, you're, you're willing to, I guess, uh, go ahead and see if, uh, put it on your property tax bill. My, my fear of the ones that are not going to receive the benefit, uh, from it will be, have to pay that same assessment. Even though they may not be attached to it. And I think that's, that's, that's the larger concern as, as, as well as in addition to that they can do this, uh, relatively quickly, quickly within two weeks. Um, and you barely even know, uh, uh, I guess we ought to make it a note of record. I think it was last week we got the Christmas card from the governor's office?
Right. Yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay.
You know, just two months late.
Yeah. And there you have it.
You're right. Exactly, exactly. Um, anything else, Steve?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, I just have one other thing to, uh, to add. Um, we got an email about, uh, tax revenues. Um, uh, this email is principally about the tax revenues to the state of Ohio and, uh, the sales tax overall for twenty or for January of this year is up about four percent over where it was last year. Oh, uh, I think the revenues in Medina County continued to be strong and revenues at the state continued, um, so. Um, I think moving ahead with the courthouse at this point in time, uh, makes a lot of sense. We can lock in a low interest rate, uh, for a long period of time. And, um, and our tax revenues seem to be pretty stable. It's important, so.
I agree.
I, I would agree. I, I'd agree. Generally, generally, if you look at some of the, uh, literature, economic literature forecast by the economists, uh, the anticipation from the Fed, what's going to go on in the future, especially with the, the very, the multi-trillion dollar budget increases and, and the deficit, uh, that eventually those, those interest rates are going to be rising. And if we don't start, if we don't take advantage now, we'll be paying much more for it later.
Right, right. Um, any other business to come before us? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, roll call please, Rhonda?
Cambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So I wish everybody a, a happy week, uh, stay warm. We're going to get more snow. I think, uh, it's supposed to be a high of three tomorrow. So, uh, enjoy the cold weather and we will see you next Tuesday. Take care.
Bye-bye.